Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I want to welcome everyone to the first meeting of the year 2023. Thank you all for being here. Council members, please stand for a moment of silence and everyone in the chamber and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on December 13th, 2022, and a regular meeting on December 13th, 2022, a special called meeting on January 3rd, 2023, and a reorganization meeting on January 3rd, 2023. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to the item that makes me most proud when we recognize our own. We have a presentation for the oath of office for Police Chief Stephen Jenkins. Madam Clerk, would you please take charge of the meeting?
Yes, sir. Chief Jenkins, if you would please join me at our designated spot, and we'd like to also call forward Mrs. Carrie Jenkins and Chaplain Hassel, if you would please report to the podium. Chief, if you would please raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me.
I, in your name...
I, Stephen Dwayne Jenkins...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
And perform all the duties...
And perform all the duties...
And incumbent upon me...
Accommit upon me...
As Police Chief...
As Police Chief...
Of the City of Portsmouth...
As the City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
by Chief Jenkins.
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you so much for today. We first thank you that you are God, that you are the Creator and sustainer of life. Father, I thank you for Stephen Jenkins. Father, I thank you, as your word says, you have prepared him for such a day as this. Father, I pray that you will give him everything he needs to successfully carry out the duties of Chief of Police for the City of Portsmouth. Father, I pray that you'll make up the difference between what he's capable of doing and the role that you've appointed him to. Father, give him wisdom beyond his years and knowledge beyond his education. Let him make good and right decisions, Father. He is a man of integrity. You have raised him up, Father, and you've placed him here. This is not just a coincidence. This was ordained and ordered by you. Father, I thank you for his family. I thank you for the support of the men and women who wear the badge for the Portsmouth Police Department. And Father, I pray that his days in this position will be long, Father. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I will be brief. I like, before I get started with anything, I'd like to have a moment of silence, please, for Officer Robert Santos, who passed away yesterday morning. He was a Portsmouth police officer who is loved by his department and, most importantly, his family, and he will be sorely missed. And I ask that you give a moment of silence for him, please. Thank you. Most of you know I don't write many things down, prepare statements. I try to speak from the heart as much as possible. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for the opportunity that's been given to me. Thank you for the support, and I accept. I accept the responsibility for the Portsmouth Police Department. I accept the role of Police Chief and all that is incumbent upon those duties. The accountability for that role. We often talk about accountability and what that means. It means that I am responsible for the product, for our behavior, for what we do and what we do not do. And I ask that you help me, hold me accountable for our actions. But I also say to you that when we have problems, that you will continue to support us as we navigate through trying to change not only the culture of an organization, but we change a city. I've been in this department for 20 years, plus, and I love this organization, not for the things that we have not been able to do, but for the potential that we have. That's what has kept many of us that have been here, because we know what we can be. To my family, thank you for supporting me. Thank you for always being my rock and my foundation. Thank you for the times that I was awake. Thank you for just being here for me. To my friends, thank you for keeping me anchored. Thank you for not letting the moment be too big. I'm a simple guy. I hate this record. Anybody that knows me, I don't like to lie, I'm like. But I appreciate the responsibility that's bestowed upon me. To the men and women of the Portsmouth Police Department, this is probably the proudest day of my life, because I have an opportunity to guide this department into the future. We can and will be the preeminent department in the state of Virginia. If you do not believe that, I need you to start believing. We are not lowering our standards. We are going to raise our standards, because we're going to be that department that people and officers are going to want to come to, because we're not going to lower our standards. I appreciate you every single day for showing up, and I'm going to continue to ask of you more and more, because I know what you have inside of you. You show it to me every day. Finally, I ask for you to continue to love this community, even the days that you doubt whether or not they love you. Continue to love this community and treat them as you would want your family to be treated. We have so much work to do, but with you, I guarantee that we can and will be successful. Thank you so very much.
Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Mayor, if it's appropriate with council, we might just want to pause to allow the officers and those that are here for the ceremony a moment to exit if they would like. You don't have to, but if you would like, just for a moment.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to the agenda item, Public Hearing, Item 23-16. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the item that we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on the proposed should be ordinances in accordance with Section 15.2-2606 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended for the following two financings. One, the City of Portsmouth, Virginia issuance of up to $5,950,000 in wastewater system revenue bonds to finance with respect to the city's water and sewer system, certain costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping capital improvements for which bonds proceeds have been appropriated pursuant to the city's capital improvement plan, as the City Council may amend it from time to time hereafter, and the cost of issuance related to the financing.
And Madam Clerk, just for clarity's sake, this is a two-part public hearing, so we'll complete the first one and then we'll go to the second one.
Correct.
Okay, just as a matter of clarity. So with that in mind, we do have a couple of registered speakers for this particular public hearing item, and the first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. I changed my name December 16th to my maiden name, so my name now is by the court system, Donna Lee Biggs. And I still live at the same place. I didn't change the name of my place. But anyway, I live in Churchland in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 23-16, as it was changed, instead of a resolution, right, as an ordinance, for the issuance of up to, I'm gonna use kind of total numbers, so I won't confuse myself, the issuance of up to $6 million in wastewater system revenue bonds to finance the city's water and sewer system for costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping capital improvements for which the bond money has been approved in the city's capital improvement plan. All right? On page 15-5 in the budget book under sewer, it has project title ARPA Sewer Pump Stations for the year 2023 is $3 million. This is one allotment from the ARPA funds. The second one, sanitary sewer overflow elimination program appropriated to date, $40 million for the year 2023 is $6 million. Total spent, $46 million. Number three, sewer pump stations improvement appropriated to date, $17 million for the year 2023, $3 million. Total spent, $20 million. Number four project, this is in the budget book, suction well rehabilitation appropriated to date, $10 million for the year 2023 is $14 million. Total spent, $25 million. Total project cost for the project titles, the year 2022 to 2027 is calculated at $169 million, and already spent $94 million. Take out the $3 million from the ARPA funds equals $91 million. Debt funding, public utilities revenue bonds of $66 million with, for the year 2023, $20 million. Total bond amount, about $87 million. Already spent $91 million, and the total bond amount is $86 million. What is needed is $4 million, not $161 million, to cover the five years. We need to have the budget book amended to show the changes in the way our money is being, is planning to be spent. In addition, we need a monthly report on the revenue, where it's coming from, and the expenses for each department. The elected has increases, increased our taxes and fees to pay for these utility repairs, so we need to know how our money is being spent. We, the people, are noticing that our money is being used for personal purposes, and we are watching the elected and appointed, not paying attention when the people are I want to know everything about my money.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde-Giotrowski. Sir, if you come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council, and other neighbors. So I am in support of what is proposed here, that the city would issue bonds in the amount of $5.9 million and would receive low or no interest funding for an extended period of time through the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is a good way for us to leverage our scarce resources to work on a problem that I consider one of the most important ones facing this city, that being addressing the consent order, the regional consent order, of which we are a part. And that total liability has been estimated a few years ago as approximately $1 billion. This takes, this will take a small bite out of that, but as we enter into the budget process for fiscal year 2024, we really need to keep our eyes on the prize, which is not taking 1,000 years to go over our system and refurbish it. There are sewer overflows almost daily in the city because of worn infrastructure. We have to up our game. There is going to be some pain that comes with it, but there will be greater pain if we do not comply with the terms of the consent order and greater pain overall in terms of the environment and quality of life for the citizens of this city. So thank you for taking advantage of this opportunity to leverage our resources and keep plugging away at getting to goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And once again, this is a public hearing item. You do not have to have signed up in order to come speak on this public hearing item. If you do come forward, you will state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this public hearing item? Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item pertaining to the next thing we are considering?
Yes, sir. Number two, the city's issuance of up to $2.9 million in stormwater general obligation bonds to finance with respect to the city's stormwater system, certain costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping capital improvements for which bonds proceeds have been appropriated pursuant to the city's capital improvement plan, as the City Council may amend it from time to time hereafter, and the cost of issuance related to the financing.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have one registered speaker for this item, and it is Ms. Donna L. Biggs.
Good evening. My name is Donna Lee Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Churchland. 23-16, two, the city's issuance of up to, I must just say, $3 million in stormwater general obligation bonds to finance the city's stormwater system, certain costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping capital improvements for which bond proceeds have been appropriated. So where is the bond proceeds going to be used for? Let's look at the budget book for five projects listed. The first project listed on page 15-24 is ARPA Ebony Heights Storm Water. The program cost and funding for the year 2023 is $2 million. The ARPA funds will pay this project. The second project on page 15-26 is ARPA Prentice Place Storm Water with a cost of $5 million with funding for the year 2024. The ARPA funds will pay for this project. The third project listed on page 15-30 is Storm Water Infrastructure Renewal, Replacement, and Flooding. This project is funded through the user fees. This project started from July 206 until July 2023 for a total budgetary cost estimate of $61 million. Appropriated for the year 2022 was $6 million. Budgeted for 2023 is $2 million. The total equals to $8 million. All right? The funding source is the Storm Water Fund is $22 million with future funding requirements of $38 million. The city's request to issue up to $2, almost $3 million in stormwater general obligation bonds will not be enough money to cover the expense of over $38 million to equal $61 million necessary to complete the project. This is a problem. The fourth project on page 1531 is Storm Water Retrofrit and Lake Pond Management for runoff from city streets which flows into numerous lakes and ponds throughout the city. The program funding is over $7 million. Appropriated for 2022 is $5 million. Budgeted for 2023 is $500,000. The total budget estimate for this project management is $6 million. With the design costing $500,000, which equals to almost $7 million, being paid by the Storm Water Fund of $7 million, who will be getting that $500,000 left over from the Storm Water Fund? The fifth project on page 15-38 is Neighborhood Roadway and Drainage regarding neighborhood flooding between the years 1997 and 2012. The project funding is over $10 million. Appropriated for the year 2022 has been $4 million, and for the year 2023, $1 million. Funding sources from the Storm Water Fund is $10 million. The city plans to issue up to $2.9 million in stormwater general obligation bonds will not be enough money to cover the expenses of over $38 million. In addition, there's money left over of $500,000 that's not being addressed. Repeat. We need to have the budget book amended to show the changes in the way our money is planning to be spent. In addition, we need a monthly report on the revenue, where it's coming from, and the expenses for each department. The elected has increased our taxes and fees to pay for these utility repairs, so we need to know how our money is being spent. We, the people, are noticing that our money is being used for personal purposes, and we are watching the elected and appointed, not paying attention when the people are speaking. And I'm telling you, we need to know about our money being spent, and that budget book needs to include money from the departments every month, their income and expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. You are not required to have signed up to come and speak before council on this public hearing matter. If you do come forward, you will be asked to give your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this public hearing item? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. And Madam Clerk, we have now come to Item 23-16. And Madam Clerk, we have now come to item twenty-three dash seventeen, U.P. dash twenty-two dash seventeen. And council colleagues, we have received a request for withdrawal of this item from the applicant. We are in need of a motion and a second to accept this withdrawal.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to item City Manager's Report on our agenda, item twenty-three dash eighteen. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $190,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2023 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for improvements to IT and data infrastructure.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item twenty-three dash nineteen. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. This is a two-part item.
Yes, ma'am.
The first ordinance, item A, is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds by the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to finance wastewater system capital improvements and establishing the terms, details, and provisions for the payment thereof wastewater system revenue bonds, total principal amount not to exceed $5,950,000.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
And of course, item B on the same item, which is under the same caption twenty-three dash nineteen, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of stormwater general obligation bonds by the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and establishing the terms, details, and provisions for the payment thereof stormwater general obligation bonds, total principal amount not to exceed $2,900,000.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any additional comments or discussion on this matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item twenty-three dash twenty. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution initiating an amendment to the Portsmouth zoning ordinance to allow city council to elect, to re, excuse me, city council to elect to reconsider denied zoning applications.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any additional discussion amongst our members of council?
Yes. Can we get further explanation on that?
Absolutely. Madam City Manager, would you want to elaborate on that?
Bob Bowing, would you please step forward and provide an explanation, please? Thank you.
Sir, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Glover and members of city council. The, at the present time, the zoning ordinance has a prohibition for applicants to reapply if they've been denied by city council. This is primarily related to rezonings and conditional use permit applications. And so if they are basically wanting to come back with a substantial, the same application, they need to wait a year. And there's also no provision in there if city council would want to go back and reconsider the action. So what would be proposed here would be to basically authorize the planning staff to go back and research the question about whether or not there should be a provision in the zoning ordinance to allow council to reconsider and to bring that forward as a proposed zoning ordinance amendment through Planning Commission and City Council.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
So would those applicants still have to wait a year before they reapply?
Yeah, this would, this would not, well, based on the concept, this would allow the 12 months to be shortened.
To be shortened to?
Something less than 12 months. Right now, you can't, you can't do anything beyond 12 months. So this would give city council the ability to reconsider at any time, depending on how the language is finally structured for the amendment, but at any time, less than that 12 months.
So, so as far as the lessening of the time, what we're voting on today, that will not include the time period that those persons have to reapply?
No. What should we be voting on tonight? Would authorize staff to go back and research the question and prepare code amendments to come back through the public hearing processes, code amendments?
Okay. Also, in that process, will citizens be required to have to pay again to reapply?
Right. All of that's what we still have to research. We haven't done any detailed research on it until city council authorizes us to take the Ash, and then we'll determine what the application process would look like.
Okay. So when, when will we be receiving that code language change?
I would expect that'd be something to be in front of council potentially as early as your meeting in March.
Okay. Is that, is that something that you are considering to drop the fees as far as reapplying again?
We would look at the fee structure. We have to look at, what we'd have to look at, again, which we haven't looked at, is the requirements for public notice. You know, if we do this process through public hearing, then there's going to be a fee that the city would have to pay for legal advertising. So we typically want to pass that fee on to the applicants for reconsideration.
And when, when that is brought back to us, can we get some idea of what other cities are doing in regards to that?
Certainly. Glad to.
And, and to add to the question of Dr. Whitaker, as you are aware today, are there any other localities that have this type of amendment in place?
Yes, I am aware they have that in the City of Suffolk. They have a reconsidering process. And quite frankly, there's a couple of different approaches to that, which we would assess during the process of looking at the code amendment.
Very good, sir. Is there any additional discussion from our colleagues on council? Sir, you may be seated. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item twenty-three dash twenty-one. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution confirming that holidays established by the city manager pursuant to her authority under section two dash one-eleven A fourteen of the city code constitutes general holidays for the employees of the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, we've now come to new business under our agenda, item twenty-three dash twenty-two. And Councilman Moody, are there any appointments to bring forward for consideration?
Yes. I move that our interim city manager, Mimi Terry, be appointed to the following: Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, Community Policy and Management Team, Transportation, District Commission of Hampton Roads as an alternate, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Newport Development Authority, Southside Network Authorities Project Committee Representative, Regional Broadband Authority Member.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on this item amongst members of?
Second.
Oh, excuse me, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, then Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Item twenty-three dash twenty-three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Resolution rescinding city council's request to the General Assembly of Virginia to amend section twelve point zero nine of the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
In addition to that, we do have three registered speakers for this item. Our first registered speaker is Mark Godoldog Yutrowski. Mr. Yutrowski, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening again, mayor, council, and other neighbors. Fortunately, you have two very diligent newly seated members of council who were present in this chamber when the original item to be, that this would rescind, was discussed and public input was taken. So I don't feel it's necessary for me to reiterate the arguments I made against the original resolution, which would be the arguments in favor of this one. I just want to thank you, members of council. I don't know who sponsored this for inclusion in the agenda this time around, but I thank you for remembering that as a possibility and for putting it before the council as a whole for action.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. Mr. Carroll, sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Steve Carroll, and my address is already a matter of record. I was not able to be here in December. But in December, five members of council voted to raise the threshold required for removing members of council or elected officials through recall, and they did so without any tangible evidence being offered. No empirical data, no factual data. Some interesting factoids. I can't recall a single at-large citizen coming to this podium and asking that the bar be raised, except those five people. It's also noteworthy that those five people have been or currently are embroiled in some kind of public controversy. And I have to ask, what are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? Is there another shoe about to drop to embarrass our city? We have enough of them already. Is it true that when you throw a stone into a pack of dogs, the only one that yelps is the one that gets hit? Now, in Luke chapter three, verse seven, God's word puts it more succinctly. "O generation of vipers, who hath warned you of the wrath to come?" Why are you so afraid of raising our recall if you've done your job and done it earnestly, and you have the public support? Several council members have voiced outrage, where certain members introduce routinely items at the eleventh hour, and yet this one was entertained on the very last council meeting of the year. Kind of ironic, isn't it? Several members of council pontificate about disenfranchisement in our elections, without merit, I would add. But yet, you engaged in the very same practice that you voted for. And you didn't do it to one group of people, you did it to an entire city. You told us, you're not accountable. You told us you don't care what you think. You told us, go take a hike. That vote was beneath statesmanship. It defies the republicanism and accountability of our public officials that we have come to know in this country. It is not an example of statesmanship. And one last note, a speaker who addressed this item after, he made an interesting point. It's always inconvenient when the speakers do not have the last word, members of council and the diastate. We have several speakers, or council members, one in particular, who likes to have the last word when we cannot come back and respond to their comments. Ad hominem attacks, threats, intimidation tactics. Now, for a new speaker, for someone that's shy, that has a very detrimental and intentional intent to stifle their ability to come before you and address this council with their concerns, and that is wrong. There is no place on the dais for threats, intimidation tactics, or vulgarity. And I expect the chair to address those in the future. Cicero once said, "Power without honor is useless." This original item is without honor, and I hope there are four honorable people on this council tonight that are going to support twenty-three twenty-three and rescind that original vote in December. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Teri Danaher. Ma'am, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. I'm Teri Danaher. I live on Dinwiddie Street in Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of Concerned Citizens of Portsmouth, which is a political action committee whose membership reflects the diversity of this city. Although I'm obviously pretty white, well, I'm at least white, I'm not necessarily pretty, my fellow committee officers and members are black and white. Our volunteers cover the spectrum from black to white. So despite attempts to declare us a racist organization at the last meeting in December, we're not. We're a real mix, and we are serious about what's going on because we love our city. Okay. I'd like to point out that free and fair elections are a reality here in Portsmouth thanks to the foresight and oversight of former city registrar Dolores Overton Short, who is my goddess of elections, and her successor Alexandra Abel. I think that there is nobody in this room who could argue that we have had the best elections ever in this city for at least the 20 years that I have lived here. And, and I just truly appreciate the work that goes into that from our registrars and all the staff that support that and all the volunteers. Anyway, voters do make mistakes occasionally, and when enough of us realize that a mistake has been made and that our elected officials are not actually representing the city's best interests, we speak out. And when elected representatives don't listen to our concerns, no matter how loudly we speak out, we may ultimately resort to a recall, which is a time-consuming, difficult, and expensive undertaking, as several of us pointed out at the December thirteenth, 2022 council meeting, and I can personally vouch for this. So I want to thank our current city council for offering this new resolution to keep our current recall process, which is already hugely challenging trust me, in place. And I urge you to do the right thing and say yes to this, this new resolution, to rescind the amendment. I also want to thank all of the people in this city who have supported the recall efforts. There are thousands of people who have done so, and, and we really appreciate it. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And council members, is there any additional discussion? So first, we'll start with Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and then Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor after her.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, citizens, for coming forth to speak on this matter. As one of the persons who was in support of rescinding the resolution, I had conversation with one of the speakers, Mr. Mark Godoldog Yutrowski. with one of the speakers, Mr. Mark Godoldy Yutrowski, right after I left the meeting, and I admitted to him that, you know, I allowed my emotions and my heartstrings to be pulled, and I thought that our charter should be aligned with those of other local municipalities. And I have done some research and looked at other city charters, and the truth of the matter is that all of our cities are different, and we should be different in how we look at our process. We should not be aligned with state code as they are a Dillon Rule state. We are a Dillon Rule state, but we should not be under the same guidelines of our state. We should follow the guidelines that are set forth in our charter. So what I would propose to my colleagues is that some future time, we take a look at all of the items in our charter, and at some future time, look at the ones that we want to change, not making knee-jerk reactions to decisions that are be made. And for that cause, I will go back to the purpose of minding the business with my head rather than my heart, and I will choose to rescind my decision from the last vote.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make sure that the information that is going forward is clear and accurate. First of all, the rescinding of the recall has nothing to do with me trying to protect my seat here on council. As far as a recall, I could care less. That's your right to do that. I serve at the pleasure of the people. But I would like to make sure that the information that goes forward, that the citizens at least have accurate and correct information. This whole recall amendment to our charter was a result of some things that occurred prior to me coming back on to council. Some of you will remember that our state Senator Louise Lucas, because of her stance at the monument, there was a recall effort against her that occurred before I came on council. Some of you will also remember that our councilwoman, Lucas Burke, there was a group that attempted to use the non-interference clause of our charter, Section 3.11, I believe, to try to get her removed based on bringing up misdemeanor charges against her. When I came back on council after being elected November of 2020, we began discussions about amending the charter in that the charter that dealt with the recall was not consistent with the state. Also, we saw that this recall process has only been used against African-American elected officials, and that is a fact. And as a result of that, we moved towards putting the charter amendment language in our legislative package. That was done well before there was an issue with the former city manager. Just want to bring to your attention that we adopted the legislative package that deals with both the recall as well as the non-interference. I want to make this clear because speakers are giving misinformation. We adopted this back in November of 2021. This was not a knee-jerk reaction. This was not something that just occurred in December of 2022. You can go to our minutes and see where we adopted that in 2021 of November. You will note that in January of 2022, a new administration came into, that we had a new governor, Youngkin. And you will note that we went before the General Assembly through our interim city attorney and presented the amendments to the charter to the General Assembly. And the citizens are not aware of the email that we received from the interim city attorney. And I just want to share some information that in speaking about the recall that Delegate Scott submitted to the House and our senior senator and the pro tem of the Senate, L. Louise Lucas, presented to the Senate. This is what was given to us through an email from interim attorney at the time, city attorney Stromberg. He said, "This was done," talking about the bill that went before, the legislation that went before the House, "it was tabled." He said, "This was done as part of a larger political battle between the Republicans and Democrats that had nothing to do with the substance of the bill. Portsmouth is ground zero in this battle. It was extremely aggravating to see this play out, as I had traveled to Richmond at 5:30 and witnessed this subcommittee approve every charter revision for many other cities except for Portsmouth because of political retribution." And note here that he also stated that Portsmouth City Council's request revisions are in danger of being rejected as a result of the battle being waged between the political parties. The bill was passed through the Senate because the Senate is Democratic. It failed in the House because the House is Republican. However, because of our Senator Louise Lucas, she was able to bring the bill back up to the floor. And then Tim Anderson, who has been an antagonistic person with both the senator as well as with Councilwoman Burke, he brought up a last-minute move that ended up causing our charter to be tabled, and that's why it did not pass. You will note that there was political retribution that was mentioned, and the question should be, what was the political retribution that caused all of the Republicans in the General Assembly to vote against the charter that was submitted, the charter amendment submitted by Portsmouth? The political retribution was a result of the first day of the General Assembly, Don Scott, our elected official, bravely and rightfully stood on the floor of the General Assembly, and the headline by Fox News is that Democrat Delegate Attacks Youngkin's Faith Says His CRT Ban Shows He's Not A Christian. You will note that Don Scott brought up on the first day of the General Assembly, he said that the old Southern strategy to use race as a wedge issue to use black bodies as a prop in your campaign, as he was criticizing the governor, which he rightfully stated because the governor used CRT, Critical Race Theory, as an issue to get white folks engulfed over an issue that was a non-issue. As a result of that, all of the Republicans in the General Assembly took retribution against Don Scott's statement and voted down our charter amendment. It had nothing to do with citizen participation. It had everything to do with the shift in government in the General Assembly where the Republicans took control of the House, and this particular piece of legislation was voted down. That is the fact. That is what happened. Has nothing to do with me trying to protect my seat. And let me say to those of you who are out here gathering the recall petition, do not deceive yourselves in thinking that just because you have black participation, that that gives legitimacy to your cause. Because history will show that whenever there has been black progress, and whenever there has been racist attacks, there has always been black participation. If you look at the Nat Turner Rebellion, that was exposed by a black person. If you look at the Denmark Visi Rebellion, that was exposed by a black person. Gabriel's Rebellion. And even now, we can look at the Supreme Court and see a Clarence Thomas participating with white supremacy. So do not deceive yourselves in thinking that just because you are integrated in your action, that that is legitimacy. You're only camouflaging what Dr. King ran in two years ago, the White Citizens Council, that attempts to block every effort of black progress. And so do what you have to do. It's your thing. Do what you want to do. I can't tell you who to sock it to.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So it was mentioned by a member of council that, first of all, just the first thing. Number one, that yes, every city does have its own charter. However, there's only four municipalities in the Commonwealth of Virginia that have a recall provision. If you look at Virginia Code, Section 24.2-20, excuse me, 24.2-233, Item Number 4, it speaks to the percentage of petitions that are needed, of signatures that are needed for a petition to go through. And so it's also been mentioned by another member of council that we want our charter to be in align with the Commonwealth's code. What's proposed and what is current is a 30% threshold of the gubernatorial election. That does not stand in alignment with what the code of Virginia states. I mean, it falls within the parameters of the city council's, I guess, powers to do so, but it is not what the other municipalities across the Commonwealth do. The second highest threshold is the city of Norfolk at 15%. And so I am for making sure that we have freedom of democracy, that we're for allowing citizens who put us here to hold us accountable, also in favor of making sure that things are done the fair and equitable way. And so with that being said, I'm going to vote to rescind this proposal to the General Assembly because it does not align with what the Commonwealth of Virginia states in its recall. And also, I don't believe that our city charter should be changed as many times as it's been changed. The city charter is similar to a constitution. Every time we have a problem, we should not run to change the charter. And so with that being said, I've told you my stance, and that's what I'm going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion amongst my colleagues on council? You have the floor, sir.
Yes, just want to make sure, Mr. Tillage, you will note that in our meeting with our legislators, that Delegate Don Scott mentioned that Portsmouth is an outlier when it comes to our charter on recalls. And so it's not so much that we are somehow what you're saying that is not in line with the state. That is true, we're not in line with the state. And the purpose of this is to move it in line in that it does have language that puts stipulation as to the criteria or threshold. So that was, that was a statement that was made by our delegate, Don Scott, that Portsmouth is an outlier when it comes to this language.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, then we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
No.
Mr. Hugel.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Tillage.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
No.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to the, the point where, we've now come to the point where, if there are any additional items to submit by members of council, are there any additional items? Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items that I wanted to bring up, and if it's the will of council, if we can get the city manager and city attorney to report back to us. Number one is short-term rentals, such as Airbnbs, here in the city of Portsmouth. As you all know, we have the casino that is opening in, well, it's supposed to open this week, but next week. And we have one hotel, which people have had that somewhere to stay. And so Airbnbs are an option that many people have. However, the city of Portsmouth, we do not have a zoning clearance for Airbnbs, nor do we have regulations that regulate. And so I would like to, if it's the will of council, to have our city manager and city attorney, along with our commissioner of revenue, to begin a process to, oh, and zoning, excuse me, to begin putting together some language that we can look at maybe over the next 60 days or whatever is permissible with the council. Second is panhandling. Panhandling, aggressive panhandling, has become an issue all across, really, the state, but particularly, you know, we're concerned about here in the city of Portsmouth. And so I am aware that in 2018, the Supreme Court did put down an opinion that it was infringing, that basically stopping panhandling was infringing upon people's First Amendment rights. However, there are other solutions that we can maybe work towards. And so I would like to ask our city attorney and city manager to report back to council some, what our options are as a municipality, that we can do within our legal bounds to address aggressive panhandling here in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. And in order to do, in keeping with the proper order, do we have a consensus on those two requests for our city attorney and our, our city manager to move forward? If you would just show by hands, then ladies, you are duly charged, and we look forward to you bringing back that information. Is there any additional information that members of council wish to submit at this time? Council, Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to, I know it's something that our citizens have been concerned about. I know that we spent a lot of money on technology with the use of our electronic boards. If we can get a report back on how that process is going, if we're going to use it, we're not going to use it, or we need new equipment, or just where we are with that. And also, would like to have a conversation with city manager regarding any coming festivals. I know we're in festival season, and I've had some requests of a couple groups that are interested in hosting festivals again.
Madam Clerk, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir, just briefly. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation with the, a member of the IT staff today, and we are looking at the company that had previously installed our electronics, voting, and that kind of thing. We are working on that now. They are waiting to get the final information from them. They should be possibly taking these out and putting in a simpler model, just with basic yes, no, abstain versus this part. It will still show on the board. So we are moving forward, and we have been for several months. But of course, with transition, you start over again. So we are in the process of making that happen. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on Councilman Tillage's request, I'd like to add to that the status update on the signs that would be posted in the medians to discourage panhandling. I think most of our exits in Portsmouth, unfortunately, have panhandlers, and some of them, many of them, leave trash behind that has to be cleaned up, plus it's a traffic hazard. And the other item, Mayor, as we come into the budget season, I want to let my council colleagues know that I will be advocating for the return of the health reimbursement agreement that our police and fire retirees and our Portsmouth supplemental retirees received as part of an agreement to, when they were exited from the city's healthcare system. That was instituted back in April of 2015, but the council that, of a couple years ago, decided to cut off the $1,400 payment to those folks. So just want to let you know that I'll be advocating for that as we get into our budget discussions. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Moody. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, two things, three, actually. The update on the Sugar Hill, when should we expect to get the next update on that from our city attorney?
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to ask for a little grace. That is a large task. We are working diligently on that. With the transition and the contracts and things that we had to attend to, it sort of diverted our attention, but I believe that we should be able to have some sort of report back to you at your March meeting to be able to give you some direction on that.
All right. And also, where are we on the disparity study? If we could get an update on that at our next council meeting. And then the third item is that at our public work session, we were updated by the finance -- And then the third item is that at our public work session, we were updated by the finance department representative regarding the forensic audit, and particularly as it pertains to the ARPA gift cards. I would like to ask my colleagues to allow for the city attorney to present back to council information regarding the ARPA cards. The information that was presented to the citizens actually was information that was not about the forensic audit. When you go back and listen to the presentation, it mainly dealt with missing cards, missing gift cards. Also, there's a reference in the presentation to the auditors that perform our financial audits, how somehow that is equivalent to them having performed an audit on the gift cards and forensics. A forensic audit and the audit that is done on our books are two different types of audits. They are addressing different issues. That should not be something for management to self-report to us. The ARPA issue had nothing to do with missing cards. And I want the citizens to make sure you understand this because this is an issue that you don't want to get the politics of it caught up because it's your tax dollars. The issue is not whether the cards were missing. The issue was about accounting for who received them. That is, what persons received the gift cards, and did it follow proper procedure and policy? That's the question that is on the table, not about whether they're missing or not. Also, there's an issue about the audit being $300,000. Go back and listen to the presentation on December the 13th at the one hour and 47 minute mark. That is where the interim chief financial officer gives the scope of work for the audit. And you will note that it is up to 300,000. It is not just for the gift cards. When you go back and listen to it, there are four areas that that audit raised questions, not only the gift cards, but also general services. There was an issue about personal vehicles being serviced with public funds and transactions with a particular vendor. Also, payments to persons involved in community programs, that that was another issue under the audit. And public utilities. And so I would ask that we get a report from the city attorney on these issues and a report back on where we are, not with just the ARPA gift cards, because we have three other issues that have not been addressed or brought to our attention in the way that it should. And so I'm asking that we allow for the city attorney to bring this information back to us, also to see where we are in an audit. Is there even a forensic audit? Because to our knowledge, from what was told to us and what mayor you had in your write-up, there has been no engagement of a company for a forensic audit. And in your write-up, you stated that there was, but what was presented today was that there was not. And so I'm asking, because of conflicts of interest, that it should be the city attorney's office that is bringing us this information so that we can rightfully make decisions and rightfully see what is going on. There were very serious accusations that were brought up, and it should not be reported back to us by management. Management should not be self-reporting.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank, thank. To consider that. Thank you for your input. And what I will say to that is, as we had learned in the work session today, the matter of the gift cards is closed, and we will no longer move forward with any more discussion about the gift cards as it relates to what has been, been shared with us by city management and our accounting, counting practices. That matter is closed. So we are no longer going to entertain that, sir, and, and you don't have the floor, and we're going to move on. We're not going to entertain any more questions. The next thing that we're going to do is-
When you say you're not going to entertain any more-
No, no, not on this. That matter is closed. That's, that's a closed matter. As the chair, it's a closed matter, sir.
Can I, can I?
You, 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 you do not have the floor. The matter is closed. That is a closed matter, sir. We move on with items submitted by council, and so I would like to share under items submitted by council. We had a prayer visual last week in light of the gun violence that we had experienced in the community that was organized by our police department and other stakeholders. And I just want to say to the citizens who participated, we thank you. I want to thank the police department and our faith-based leaders and our citizens who came out to honor those who we have lost to gun violence in our community. It was well-attended by a cross-section of the community, and we are grateful, and we will continue to work as a community to, to come together and ensure that we have the policies and the practices in place that ensure that we have a safe, thriving community for all. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Also, January 15th is the birthday, 1929, of the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And, you know, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., for me, holds a very important place in my life. And if you've ever been in the mayor's office, behind my chair, I have a, a copy of his last speech, "I've Been to the Mountain Top." You're welcome to come and read it at any point. But I'll say to you in that speech, he talked about what do we do as citizens? What is our highest calling? And he talked about, you know, he gave a parable about, you know, the Good Samaritan, and that person that, as the Good Samaritan, you know, when he saw someone on the side of the road that needed attention, he didn't think about what would happen to him if he stopped to help that person, but he thought about what would happen to that person that was injured on the side of the road if he didn't. So as we celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King, the Drum Major for Justice, which is celebrated on January the 16th, I want to remind everyone to search within yourselves and take, take time out of your schedule to read about that Drum Major for Justice, who through his efforts and the efforts of many in this country, changed the direction of this country forever, and it was all for the right reasons. In addition to that, I want to let everyone know, we have a publication out, which is a calendar of events that support Black history. It is the 2023 Calendar of Events, and if you look at this program, it has a number of, of presentations and other activities that will take place in the city of Portsmouth supporting Black History 2023. I encourage our citizens to get involved, but not just get involved, bring your children, your grandchildren, your other loved ones, to learn about and participate in these opportunities. Because the only way we get better as a community is when we recognize the achievements of all Americans, and we celebrate those together. Thank you, and if there are any other questions, as I said, we're not going to entertain any more questions regarding the ARPA funds and the gift cards. So if that's your question, sir, it will not be entertained. Is that your question?
Are you giving me the floor?
I'm not giving you the floor.
Why not?
Because we're moving on. The next part of the agenda-
Well, you're not, you, I'm, I'm-
Sir, sir, sir.
I have my hand up to be recognized.
You do not have the floor, and I'm not going to recognize you.
You haven't heard me speak yet, so you don't know what I'm about to speak to.
I'm sharing with you, we're not entertaining any more issues.
If that's what you're going to do, then you can shut it down. You can shut it down if that's where I go, but you, you have to at least recognize and give me an opportunity.
Sir, I share with you, it is the chair, it is the chair's-
I'm not speaking on that issue.
Hold on, hold on. It is, hold on, let me be clear on the rules.
I know the rules.
Sir, you are out of order. First of all, you're out of order because you're not, you're not, I am the chair. So let me explain to you what the rules are as it relates to the chair. The chair has the privilege of either recognizing or not recognizing. That is, that is a position of the chair.
True.
You are not recognized. And so I just share with you, I'm not recognizing that particular thing.
I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking on that.
Sir, we're going to move on with the agenda.
I'm not speaking on the ARPA gift cards. I don't have my hand up to speak on the ARPA gift cards.
If you are not speaking on that matter, and you're, you're speaking on another matter as it relates to what we're doing as the business of council, you have the floor. But as it relates to the, the issue of gift cards, sir, we are no longer having that discussion.
The, the reason I am raising my hand to speak is because there were other issues other than the gift card that I presented to council that we should get a report back on, and that is dealing with general services, the payments to those involved in community programs, and the public utilities. And so if that's what was presented to us as being part of this examination, that should not be for management to present. That should be for council to receive it from an objective body, and that's why I suggest the city attorney.
You know, and the good part that you say, management presented, and that is exactly the role of the city manager and her department head.
Not to self-report.
Hold on, hold on, to submit information to the council. And that has been done, sir, and so therefore, as a result, we're moving forward with the next-
But we haven't received information on these other three items.
Sir, we're moving forward with the next agenda item.
If you don't, if you want to cover it up, that's, that's why I just want the public to know.
Sir, sir, I assure you.
We have not received the information.
I assure you, sir, to your point, let me, let me be clear with you. Let me, as the chair, I have the floor. I have the floor, and you do not, you're out of order. And I, I need not tell you what the next thing is going to be if you persist to be out of order. Because, because you continue to present, sir, a disrespectful posture of the chair, and that will not be tolerated in 2023. I want you to be clear.
That's, that's fair.
So, so, so what I will share with you, because you have called my, my, my credibility into question, there is no cover-up here, sir. So we are going to move forward on the agenda item, which is, if there are no other items submitted by council members, we're going to move on to item 2324, which is Ms. Terry, our interim city manager, on pending items. Ma'am, do you have any pending items?
No pending items at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item 23 dash 25. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask you that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum would be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Gary Bahena. Mr. Bahena, would you please come forward? State your name and address, and you will have five minutes, sir.
My name is Gary Bahena. I live at 428 North Street. Mr. Mayor, my vice mayor, council members. I'll be brief. For the last two years, I felt that the vice mayor had been wrong. I've told her that every time I get to see her. I've told her she's been my vice mayor, she will always be my vice mayor. Madam Vice Mayor?
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Crystal Johnson. Ms. Johnson, if you would come forward, ma'am. State your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Crystal Johnson. I reside over in the Highlands neighborhood of Portsmouth, Virginia, and I just wanted to share my story. Imagine being at work, receiving a phone call from your mother, who was literally historical. Imagine hearing your mother say that your child is unresponsive. His eyes is rolled in the back of his head, his lips are blue, and his hands and feet are cold. Imagine yourself screaming over the phone, call 911, only to hear your mother say that she already had, and they're not picking up. Let me say that again, they're not picking up. I literally sped through the city of Portsmouth to rescue my child and transport him to the emergency room. I had to break every speed limit imaginable. I know I cut people off, but all I was thinking was, I have to save my baby. Imagine me driving like a bat out of hell, and my poor mother holding my unresponsive baby in her arms, rocking him while crying and praying. The crazy thing is, both my mother and I continue to call 911 while en route to the ER. I'm thinking, why won't no one pick up? Maybe they can have, maybe they can have a doctor meet us outside. Maybe there can be an ambulance nearby that can help us. However, nobody picked up. We must have called 10 times. The phone just rang and rang. We only got help once we arrived at the ER, and I ran in with my baby boy, still unresponsive. I'm so disappointed with the city of Portsmouth. Had I known when I purchased my home in this city that 911 wouldn't respond in an emergency or even pick up the phone, I promise I wouldn't purchase it here at all. This is a gross failure on the part of the city. People's lives are at stake. Babies' lives are at stake. Every time I close my eyes, I see my baby unresponsive in my mom's arms. The sound of the ringtone that keeps ringing in my ear. I haven't been able to get an ounce of sleep. I can't even put my baby down. I'm walking around with my keys around my neck, scared that another emergency will happen and no one will be there to help me. I am here today to shed light on this situation and to speak not only on behalf of my son, but on behalf of the many citizens whom have reached out to me in regards of the city of Portsmouth emergency management system. I beg the council to, the council to look into what exactly is happening with this, with this situation. Because as previously stated, lives are at stake. Additionally, I believe in being a part of this, this solution, not the problem. Therefore, I plead to assist my city in any way that I can by overhauling the incompetent response system that, that currently exists. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, if you would just hold on for a minute, I, I want you to know that I think we had a conversation, if you recall.
We did.
And, and I think it was that, or that maybe the next day, or that we talked. And I just want you to know that, that on behalf of our city, we certainly apologize for any inconvenience. That is not how we will do business, and you have a right to an expectation of ensuring that when you call, someone will be there to assist you. I do want you to know that. So, so I just wanted to say, on behalf of the city council, that, 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 that we will do better, and we're already working on doing better. And I, I appreciate so much you coming before us and also offering to be a part of the solution, but make no mistake about it, we will correct this matter. And thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Vice, Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw your email, and we were all quite alarmed. I think we all at the same time asked for responses to your situation, and we did get a resolve that they're working on. But want citizens to know that when you're in a call queue, don't hang up, because when you hang up and try to call back, that puts you further down in the queue call. And there's also a new option that we were told about, that you can text.
Text, yeah.
Text.
Well, I, I did, I text. Actually, I spoke to the manager over there, and she told me, as we spoke on the phone, to shoot a text, just to see how it works. And when I text, I didn't get a response for about 30 minutes. Yeah. So I'm, you know, I'm, you know, my concern to that situation is, okay, if this is a life-threatening situation where someone's life is at stake, you know, is 30 minutes, you know, that's a long haul for someone to, and then in certain situations, you don't have time to, to text, you know? You, you know, we have cellphones that has a, a little one-pressed button that can call 911, so you know, that's kind of hard to text if you're in the middle of-
An emergency.
Any type of violence or, you know, emergency situation, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for that feedback, and we are working- Well, thank you for that feedback, and we are working on the situation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hold on, ma'am. We, we, we have some, Councilman Hugle, I don't mean to, you know, Councilman Hugle, then Councilman Tillage.
Yes, thanks for, for making us aware of the problem. As I recall, your issue happened just before the December city council meeting, and there was a discussion during that meeting about understanding the issues behind what happened. Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we could get the city manager to update us on the 911 improvements so that we, we can advertise to the public what's going on, when the new 911 system is expected to be in place, and, and if there are any other things besides the, the text alternative that we can inform our, our citizens about in the meantime.
Yes, sir. Madam, Madam interim city manager. Is it the pleasure of council for the interim city manager and her staff to come back with a presentation on that particular issue?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Very good. And Councilman Tillage?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hugel actually took the words out of my mouth. There is no reason why a city should fail its citizens when it comes to public safety. And the 911 call center has been an issue, well, the call system has been an issue for a long time. And for a citizen to have to call repetitively to no avail, we are constantly failing our, our citizens.
Yeah.
And so I'm sorry, ma'am, for, for your situation, that it's completely uncalled for, and I just second what Councilman Hugel had mentioned.
And actually, I do, I just want to bring, again, it has been a long time, and it actually, in the process of me experiencing this situation, I also found that a few years ago, a young lady lost her life, not because they didn't answer the phone, but because it wasn't, like, they weren't properly trained on how to handle certain situations. I don't know if you guys are aware, but I actually was trying to find an article so I can be specific on what I'm saying. But it was a young lady, African-American young girl, who had called 911 because she was being chased by her boyfriend, and she lost her life, you know, because of lack of training. So, you know, now we have an issue of not only the training in the 911 operational system, but we also having an issue with no responses, so.
Thank you.
You know.
And Councilman Barnes, did you want the floor? Did you want to ask a question, or did you want to say something? I saw you with your hand up. Was that just to give approval? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Charlie Jones. If you please state your name and address, you will have five minutes, sir.
My name is Charlie Jones. I live on 912 Deuce Street in Portsmouth, Virginia. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Charlie Jones, CEO of Electric Equipment Supply. I am a Army veteran.
Sir, sir, could you please me, move the mic closer to your, your speaking area so that we can all hear you? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. I'm a, I'm a veteran. After eight years of trial and error, financial investments, savings, and hard work, I was granted a patent on October the 26th, 2021. The patent is named the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station. It was one of, point, 22% issued in 2021 by the United States Patent Office. The Electric Hot Spot is a revolutionary electric outlet system that is Wi-Fi accessible, on-the-grid and off-the-grid solar. It uses standard electricity, most common in North America. I want the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station to become part of Portsmouth's growing infrastructure. I believe that once the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station is installed at strategic locations around the city of Portsmouth at cost, profits will grow as the need for powering devices outside of the American home becomes more popular, useful, and helpful to the environment. The system is easy to use as it is sturdy in design. Custom, simply, customers just simply pay a small fee by swiping the credit cards to use the machine for a period of time. After the state, after the payment is processed, the customer simply plugs their devices into the electrical GFI outlet, which then charges their devices until the time reaches the pre-purchase amount of time. Customers can opt to purchase more time to continue powering devices by adding more funds to the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station. The purpose for this presentation is to place the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station at events, festivals, parks, stadiums, boardwalks, and high-populated areas around the city. The Electric Hot Spot Charging Station is also designed to charge other devices that use up to 120 volts. Some of these devices include e-bikes, scooters, wheelchairs, power tubes, computers, cellphones, and a hundred other devices, which a standard GFI three-prong plug. The benefit to the city of Portsmouth will be to attract more people to events in the downtown boardwalk. In an emergency situation, customers can access power 24 hours, seven days a week. In closing, it is my hope that you will support the new innovation technology, patented concept, as the city grows in adversity, culture, and recreation. Additionally, the, the Electric Hot Spot Charging Station is manufactured in the United States of America. Please contact me about the above email address or cell phone for further discussions. I look forward to hearing from you concerning this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Veronica Dance. Ms. Dance, if you are present, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Is Ms. Dance present? We'll be moving down the list then. The next speaker is Ms. Cheryl Ray. Ms. Ray, are you here?
Ms. Cheryl Bryant.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope you guys is enjoying your New Year so far.
We are. Could you please move the microphone closer to your mouth? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Bryant. I reside here in Portsmouth. Now, when a person is hurting, whether it's emotionally, mentally, physically, they seek help. Now, I have came here on several occasions, spoke my concerns, thoughts, issues, even requested a city ordinance for the C code 22-831 to help provide a better community, to improve the mission that is held by the fire and rescue department. I have watched individuals do the same thing I did, express their concerns, issues, and it all, to me, it all feel like it equals up to nothing. No response unless you're talking about the money or percentages. I experienced something that was very devastating to me. I don't know if you guys can relate, of being in an accident and having a concussion and not getting the medical assistance that you need. But of all things that it affected, not myself, my family, my friends, other loved ones, my rights, my right to be treated fairly and equal with respect, my right to have the equal opportunity to receive medical treatment, or at least have the option, discrimination of being biased against because I'm not law enforcement status, my issues and concerns get thrown under the, out the window, swept under the rug, goes in one ear and out the other. What's the point of even having rights and laws if certain people or individuals don't obey by them? What's the point of even having a city council meeting? If nothing's going to be changed or looked into, resolved? What's the point? Representing a city stands for strength, positive encouragement, positive vibes, understanding and knowing the struggle, fighting to make a change and improvements throughout the community. Representing a city is not to be a ghost mantis, which is a camouflage that comes when you're threatened or offense, especially when you're the one that's not being accountable. Everybody here always say accountability, but it don't seem like to me that nobody's being accountable in my situation. A lot of you wonder why Portsmouth is out of control. There's no balance, respect, concerns of one another, especially for the leadership in Portsmouth. People want to be loved and treated fairly. Maybe if you was to build a trade school, people would have something to look forward to, other than the struggle, that gets them involved, that'll get them involved and want more out of life. Then they start to realize their self-value, change of a mindset equals a change of a lifestyle. Better to move, better, you know, better, better organizations and after-school programs for the youth. Give them something positive to do. Everyone falls short on something. It doesn't matter who you are. With all the killings and the lockups, these kids are lost. Some don't have parents or family at all, like we did growing up. We need to start taking others' people's feelings in consideration by simply asking them, or, well, ask yourself, how would you feel if you was that individual? What would you do if you was in their shoes? Now, I don't have much time, but for those who want to know about the C code 22-831, you can look it up on my Facebook page, Cheryl Bryant in Portsmouth. I posted it up. Because something is not fair. If it was one of y'all family members, you'd be right there jiffy in a hurry. What's the difference? You representing for the people. Now, law enforcement violated my rights, and y'all not doing anything about it. For me to get a response for the Lieutenant Governor, Ms. Sears, and not from one of y'all, that's ridiculous.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammond, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have
My name is Leon Hammonds. I'm going to Boyd Court. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. If you could just lean a little and speak a little louder, please.
Okay. Copy now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know what situation that might be out of order about these gift cards. I don't know what to say about the $300,000 versus $80,000 gift card, but the $80,000 gift card shouldn't be laying around, should have been given out. If they had, if they weren't given out, they should have been. If they were, they should have been accounted for. We've got an interim city manager. Now, we have turned the corner. New Year, all right. We got a qualified interim city manager. I may be out of order again. I propose, everybody's here, you all can vote her in as city manager. You don't have to do no back-room thing or nothing else. You can vote her in. There's no problem on that, because the simple fact is, she's qualified. She's done the job beforehand, and she's doing the job now. We need to get together 2023. We don't need the same thing, 2022 is gone. The sad thing, one sad thing is that we can't even buy a new car in Portsmouth. And why is that? I gotta go all the way down there to, probably Lexus, buy my Lexus, which I know, I know Lexus dealers not going to come to Portsmouth, but I can't buy a Toyota here. So really, you know, it's ridiculous. I mean, we've had cars, car dealers here, and we've got the money here also. We have the money, but think about it, we need the people to go ahead and work on that. We need the city council to fight for bringing things in here like that. We don't need no more car washes, you know? You know, every corner, almost, you know, almost getting more car washed than 7-Eleven. So really, you know, so really, you know, with 100,000 people, you need a better situation than what we have, starting now. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. William Britt. Mr. Britt, sir, if you come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. Congratulations to the two new, two new council members and the upgrade to Mayor, Vice Mayor Burke. I congratulate y'all, and hopefully we can start working together. I got several problems pertaining to crime. Number one, we hit on the situation of homeless, we hit on the situation of pandering. Now, we got over 40 homeless people living in the woods across the street where they're building the Dagon Casino. You know Dagon well, those homeless people are going to be over there at the casino begging for money. Now, it, it, to me, it's disgusting. You know, it, I see it all day long, up and down, I'm on Rodman Avenue with my business. They're coming to my business, they're panhandling my business, they harass my customers for money. And, you know, 99.9% of them are out there because they have either alcohol problems or drug problems. Now, if they got psychological problems, we need to do something about that. We need to get them involved in some kind of, or some kind of program to help them out psychologically. All right. Another problem I have is stacking, hang on a second, I'm looking for the word I'm looking for here, because it literally pisses me off, stacking of charges. All right. Last council meeting I was at, I told you guys I was arrested because it took the police three hours to go over there and come to my place of business, and, you know, they were stealing catalytic converters from me, and I lost over $12,000 worth. All right. So when the police got down there three hours later, and don't get me wrong, I backed the police department 100%. I was charged with, because I detained them, I blocked the street so they couldn't get out, and I had my, my gun out, because they were coming toward my vehicle with their vehicle trying to get out. All right. When the police got there, I stuck the gun in my pocket. I don't have a concealed weapons permit. I was arrested for that and two other additional charges. The two additional charges, we went to court. They asked me to plead guilty for the gun charge, which is concealed weapons charge, which is minor, and they dropped the other two. All right. Now, my god-grandson got in the situation. He was charged with three, two felonies and misdemeanor charge. I had the dissatisfaction in going to the court and looking at the dockets. If you look at the dockets, there, there are now stacking charges. So what that means basically...
Sir, sir, I, I need to, I need to make something clear to you. You have to speak to something that this council can affect. We as a council cannot affect those matters. So... So, in the interest of allowing you to go forward, you must keep it germane to something that we can affect. We can't affect what happened to you, whatever the circumstances were, and we're not gonna speak to those, but so-
I'm not talking about that.
Okay, but that's what I'm sharing with you, as you continue forward, um, you need to speak to things that the council can affect.
All right, and that's what I'm saying. The city council needs to go over there and look at these court dockets. People are charged with more than just one charge now, they're charged with three to five charges.
Sir, once again, the city council cannot affect what takes place at the court. There's a clear delineation between what we do here and what they do. So, what I'm sharing with you is, you have to speak the matters to council that we can affect. If we can't affect it, um, there, there, you, you're really not really helping yourself in that regard, cuz there's not anything we can do about it.
Right, but you, you, you guys oversee the police department, all right? So hence B, they are charging these charges to make sure, because we got a district attorney who is with these plea bargaining, they're not going after these major criminals. All right, so you're charged, people are charged with several charges, so they can plead them out with one charge, such as with myself, one charge, the other two are bogus. All right, so it's a problem. You guys need to go over there and look at the docket and look at these charges, and you'll see three, four, five charges on one person. And that, to me, is uncalled for. You know, it's, it's disgusting, and it needs to be addressed, all right? Another thing is, and like I said, believe me, I am a backer of the police department. Ever since my brother was murdered in 2011, Mark was one of the detectives that worked his murder case, and I am an advocate for the police department, not against. But by stacking charges against people, we're talking black, white, green, yellow, it's not fair to the people. Um, so it needs to be addressed. Another thing, when we're looking at the, the homeless situation and the crime, we got a problem with crime in the city. And, you know, I don't know where we stand with the hiring of police officers. And it's just disgusting, when, when you go over, you look at TV, like last, when the city manager was terminated, uh, here's, you know, Channel 10, Channel 3, and Channel 13 sitting there saying, oh, we got another tobacco in the city of Portsmouth. We all look like a joke, every one of us. You know, the people that live here and the people that run it. It looks stupid. I mean, we need to go over there and make a decision, if she's doing a good job, let's keep her. If the police chief's doing a good job, let's keep him. You know, we all make mistakes, let's work around our mistakes and not terminate people. As far as this racial stuff, man, I mean, you know, I hate to say it, but it's getting old. You know, uh, uh, black is black, white is white, we all bleed the same. I could care less what color somebody is. I think we all need to be treated with respect and not go over and cite this racial crap in the city council, because you're gonna alienate one group against the other. And, you know, like I said, when you, when you were over there with Tyrate, man, people just insulted, they don't wanna hear all that crap, black and white. So you really wanna do something for the city, let's do something for the city. Let's, let's get rid of all this crap.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Adalde Giotrowski. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. So, I left here last month, uh, pretty unhappy, because I came up and spoke to an issue and had my intentions and my, uh, my honor, uh, besmirched, and had no opportunity to refute, rebut, present the other side of the argument. If you have a speaker statement for the citizenry, and there are limits on what we can say that go beyond the limits of civility and truthfulness, uh, you're essentially putting a gag on us in a way that I, I doubt is constitutional. If council members can say things about members of the public that the people spoken about have no opportunity to refute, essentially, you're tying our hands behind our backs, gagging us, and allowing somebody to pummel us in public. These meetings need to be conducted in a way that respects the dignity of the forum and the dignity of the people appearing in this forum. That falls not only to the mayor as presiding officer, but that falls to every person seated on council. Because if you observe something occurring here, like what I described, you have the right to call a point of order. And the presiding officer is, it is his duty to respond to that point of order. So I wanna say a couple of things about history in this city with regard to recall. Number one, I was not here when Mayor Holly was recalled the first time, so I did some digging in the archives of the new journal and guide, and found out some things that I had never heard from people who were here at the time. One of the interesting facts was that a defender of Mayor Holly in that first recall stated publicly that Portsmouth is not a racist city. She was African-American. It was also interesting to read in the Journal and Guide that among the supporters of the first Mayor Holly recall were a then councilwoman who later went on to become the senior senator in that body. Another one went on to become a long-term council member, and the interim mayor, Mr. So, if there is collaboration between people of different ethnicities, does that make the one who is of the same ethnicity as the person being recalled a collaborator and a trader? Or do we have a basis, which I hope is the case, for people working across artificial divisions like race, gender, religion, and political affiliation? That's what I would like to see in this city, that's what I would like to see in this country, and that's what I would like to see in this world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes, sir. Happy New Year, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Unseen Tears would like to congratulate the Chief of Police, Chief Jenkins, for his official appointment as the city, uh, Chief of Portsmouth. Unseen Tears would also like to congratulate, uh, elected officials, Mr. Vernon Tillich, Mark Hugo, and our, uh, returning councilperson, uh, Bill Muddin. Would also like to congratulate Ms. Mimi Terry on her appointment as interim city manager. Uh, now, back to the business at hand. Uh, we had an event, uh, this Sunday, uh, we wanted to thank Lieutenant Governor Louis, uh, Ms. Sears for coming out and talking with the mothers of Unseen Tears. Uh, she gave us some great inspiration and great talk about, uh, uh, getting involved and doing something instead of, uh, laboring in your, in your tears. And it was, it went over pretty well. So again, thank you, Lieutenant Governor Sears. One thing we wanna know about is, um, the updates on the camera system, the 400 cameras that, uh, I think the, uh, previous city manager was working on. Um, there hasn't been a report, I hadn't heard anything about, I think they say in February, but I don't know how you guys work as far as when you get a newer city, uh, city manager and how long the process takes. Another thing is, um, with our organization, we have a lot of mothers involved, we, we wanna know, I'm trying to, I've been coming here for almost two years now, and I've never gotten a list of organizations that was pride, provided service to families pertaining to nothing, dealing with services for the city, when I asked it, when I asked for it. So again, I don't know if I'm just, I'm just, y'all just giving me the death here or what, or not understanding there's some real issues going on, but could I please get a list of organizations that are city-funded, so that I could present to some of the families? Cuz we, we tackle a lot of stuff that some of you guys, I ain't never, you guys don't even tackle, you know? So, and it's nothing against you, but y'all have business to do, and we trying to take over some of that business to help you out. Another thing is, um, finding out of these unsolved murders. I heard you say, Mayor, that, you know, that's not our business as far as, uh, nothing you can do, but we had a great kind of like visual, great kind of like visual, but why was the Commonwealth attorney not there?
Sir, that, that would be a question that you would have to pose to-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just-
See, see, because we need to make, I, I need to help you-
Can I get my time back?
You'll get your time back, but I just wanna make that clear, that's a question you need to ask the Commonwealth's Attorney. We, as council, do not have any authority over the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. She or every other constitutional officer in the city of Portsmouth, of which the sheriff, commissioner of revenue, the clerk of the courts, the Commonwealth's Attorney, the city treasurer, are all elected officials that have their own rules and policies that govern their conduct.
Yes, sir, and I understand that, I know that about the five elected, but I also know that, um, I was called to be there, and I showed up, and I showed up with the mothers of the deceased victims. So again, again, maybe it's not a point of matter to some people, but me being there, being asked to come was a point of matter. So again, that's neither here nor there. Again, Unseen Tears is, was born about in the city of Portsmouth, and we provide a service with no funding and not asking them funding for the citizens who are experiencing gun violence in the city of Portsmouth. Yes, we have just had one recent, our first one, Mr., Mr. John, Javonte Martin, we just had our first 2023, unfortunately. But again, we have to be more proactive and get in front of this thing. If we don't, we gonna keep going through the, I'll be back every second and third or fourth twos of this month, saying the same thing over and over again. And I'm not trying to belittle anybody, but we gotta get in front of this some kinda way. It's getting redundant. I heard somebody on this, on the TV, I heard an article talking about the city of Portsmouth is currently concerned with the safety of the casino, something about the casino, what in the world? What about the safety of the citizens in the communities? And some of these communities are, are doing the same thing over, violence has happened over and over again, but that's neither here nor there. I come before you to label and speak the names and the spirits of those who've lost their lives in the city of Portsmouth, unfortunately. Uh, and I'll say their names. Charles Mosely, Cor Tern, Emmanuel Tern, Jeffrey Basemore, Jaquan Johnson, Carlton Dodd, Tashik Wolf, Anthony Skeeter, Raquon Morgan, Natasha Hicks, Jamal Howard, Mayor, thank you, sir, Amaje Lee, Demond Mitchell, Lakeisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Joshua Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Norvell, Yaseen Caraway, James Hill, Dante Copeland, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javon Williams, Kamadri Howard, DeQuan Epps, Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Timothy Shine, Brian Williams, Marquel, Curtis Walton, Kyrie Thomas, William Suffrich, Carson Baines, Antonio Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, Kiara, Victor Green, David Branch, Lawrence Kofa, Crystal Jacobs, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boobie Staten, Malani Everett, Amari Collins, Andrea Bethia, Kareem Barshay, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamont Mitchell, Keith Wuhan, Raquon Gray, Dion Lofton Jr., Georgia Devonte Lee, Alicia Dion Mears, Ashley Merricks, Robert Parker, Daylon Spence, Terrence A. Johnson, Devon Crosby, Tyrell Jones, Ariel McLaren, Jatavia Hill, Keandre Jenkins, John Plummer Jr., Bernard Clack, Maze Moon, Anthony Brown, Jaquan White, Christopher Washington, Clifton Privet, Ashante Britt, Lamont Brown, Donald Thornton, Calvin Colston, Desiree Lightfoot, Teontae Clark, Ronnie Turean, Jesse Hogg, Johnny Freeman, Jameer Barnes, Cor Harris, Mashik Burden, William Jones, Ralph Harris, Kiana Bailey, Elvis Blaze, Melvin Bynum, Samuel Jones, Naquan Madison, Shaquita Branch, and Javonte Martin, one new one in 2023. And again, council, we are here for your support. There is an organization that's willing to help stop ostracizing this organization, because I don't see no more organizations participating because there ain't no toys being given out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes, sir.
My name is Merle Rutledge, and I'm gonna just go ahead and go against the rules a little bit to say my address, 1415 Jackson Avenue, Chesapeake, Virginia. To Deborah White, I do apologize. I know sometimes I can be very fiery and very much combative, because I love people. I love people, and it's not always about fighting, it's not always about looking for anything and everything for us to pick on and think it's bigger than what it is. The reality is, most people are concerned that our leaders are more in love with money and not people. It's the sad reality that I hope US leaders change. This is one of the few timeframes where I kinda pause, because everybody in this room represents something special, not just because you're councilmembers or just people who are here just to, you know, have their voice and to speak about how to improve this city, how to bring back an area that many people feel is lost. But I'm glad that I still have God that I still believe in, because I was lost too, just like anybody else. And by a mason grace, I was found. See, when I talk, I tell people I talk from the heart and from the soul. Nobody here is perfect, we all make mistakes. And I know there's things that y'all wish y'all could handle better, and I hope in 2023 that we don't have this business or this hostility, we don't treat people differently because they're Democrat or they are Republican, we don't treat people differently because they are homeless or whether they are rich. We should all care about each other. We should care about the police and what they are going through, we should care about a woman who felt like somebody didn't answer the call when it's needed. We should care about the mothers and the fathers, the sisters and the brothers that have lost loved ones. We should care about- We should care about the people going homeless every single day across America. It's bigger than this. That's why I can't just step up here and just continue to see us destroy each other, hurt each other, harm each other. It doesn't take a gun to kill us. It takes words. That's exactly what's going on here in Portsmouth. It's going on all across this country. Sometimes we gotta give up our own pride. We gotta give up what we want in self. We may want to be all on the news, we may want to be a celebrity, we may want to be this. Our kids have dreams too. That's what I'm here for. Because we used to all be kids. We all used to grow up, play. We was able to go down the street and not really worry about gunshot, but we was more worried about the uncle or the neighbor catching us, causing trouble. What this city, what Virginia, what we all need is a different way of dispute resolution, how we handle things. We shouldn't be killing each other. And I'm not just talking about death, because death doesn't care about race. Death only cares about destruction, chaos. I hope that each of you leaders take time to look in the mirror, not just the man in the mirror, the woman in the mirror, whoever you consider yourselves in the mirror. And when you move forward and make decisions, understand that we are all in it together, black, white, Puerto Rican, Hispanic, doesn't matter. We are in this situation together. Don't let somebody tell you because you're black, you are inferior. Don't tell somebody that's white, you are what you call privileged. We ain't privileged for this. None of us are. And I pray for the stress that y'all deal with every single day waking up. Don't think ever I hate you. I can't do that. I love you more than ever before. I'm just hoping y'all bring back the love that Portsmouth needs to see. So to everybody in this room, we ain't Democrat or just Republican. We are Americans, and God bless you, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Council members, seeing no additional business for our consideration, this meeting is adjourned.